Welcome to Action 2020 Oakland School Board Candidate Forum for District Seven, which represents East Oakland and adjoining districts. I am Clarence Hunt, your host. As most are aware, Oakland schools have been facing serious challenges of school closures, budget cuts, policy issues, and the major influence and loss of students in real estate to charter schools. We at Action 2020 are a group of residents, parents, and teachers who are determined to see strong supporters of community public schools elected in Oakland this November. For more information about us, please visit action2020oakland.org. Other events and any schedule changes will be available on our website. Four candidates for the District Seven seat are joining us today. Coach Ben Tapscott has lived in Oakland for fifty-seven years. For sixteen years, he was a teacher and head basketball coach at McLeimans High School and the first African-American head basketball coach in Oakland. His main issues are equity and justice. Clifford Thompson has served in the field of education for forty years. He served as a classroom teacher for seventeen years and an administrator for twenty years and has returned to the classroom for the past three years and teaches fifth grade presently. He teaches in a school that predominantly serves Black and Brown students. Christina Molina is a mother of four OUSD students, two of which are special learners. She has been a community activist and parent organizer for more than a decade and is running for school board in District Seven. Victor Valerio grew up in East Oakland and attended OUSD schools. Currently, he is an appointed member of the OUSD Bond Oversight Committee for ABNJ. Works as a project engineer in the San Francisco Municipal Transportation Agency and learned about municipal budgets during his internship at California State Assembly during the last budget crisis. Asking questions on behalf of Action 2020 will be Gerald Smith, an East Oakland resident and longtime social activist who is concerned about the school closures and the inequity in our Oakland public schools. There will be five questions. If time allows, there will be a six. Answers will be limited to two minutes. Ms. Epstein will request clarification needed with one minute to respond. We will rotate who answers first. The candidates will allow each other to speak in their turn without interruption. After the Action 2020 questions, I'm sorry. After the Action 2020 questions will be introduced from our audience along for one-minute responses. For all time limits, the moderator's decision is final. Gerald Smith will now begin the questions.
Now, okay. Okay, hello, I'm Gerald Smith. So let's begin with Coach Tapscott, okay? Ben Tapscott, COVID-19 is clearly an emergency, causing an emergency in this country. Oakland Unified School District recently announced that the new school year will start as virtual classes with no in-person, on-campus teacher lead instruction. Fifty thousand students and fourteen thousand parents and caregivers need a clear path for quality education for our children. What's your suggested policy and plan to reopen the schools in August and make distance learning work, Ben?
Well, the first thing we need to do is to make sure that none of our students, teachers, or support staff go into schools that are unsafe. The thing that I'm looking at with the distant learning is we have to have one-on-one, our computers. Parents are calling telling me they have three children and they only have one Chromebook. They also have to have internet access. And if they don't have a hotspot, we can use that educational channel to help inform our students about what they're doing. They need to log in in the morning. Ten minutes, they're tardy. If they don't log in, they're absent. They need to give grades and make sure that the kids are earning what they receive. We had six point two million students since March that have not attended any school in any of the districts in California. We have to make sure that the resources for some of our challenging students get the resources they need. What about technicians that are going to repair books if they stop working? They have to have onsite technicians and we have to make sure that special needs students are taken care of emotionally as well as physically. Many parents are being forced to put their child back in school. You can tell Donald Trump and Betsy for me that they're not going to force our children back into unsafe schools. We will not be Donald Trump's guinea pigs. The fact that we have this virus, is there going to be testing of every person if we do open? Berkeley has said it will be distant learning for one year Oakland has had since March to get their act together, and I've yet to hear any type of plan for students in Oakland.
We're going to move over to Brother Clifford Thompson. Clifford, did you hear the question or would you like it repeated?
Yes, I heard the question, okay, sir.
Let's have it.
Okay, actually, I want to take a step back. Number one, I'm a teacher currently and I have been teaching through the pandemic. I had to do distance learning through the pandemic, so I understand the challenges that teachers face. I also am a community member, so in talking to individuals in the community, I understand what they're facing. One of the specific things, and I have to mention this right now because as I was walking around getting signatures, one of the specific things that was mentioned by one of my parents near Stonehurst Elementary School is that safety is of the utmost importance. I must concur with that individual because this is truly a virus that's devastating our entire world. What we have to do is make sure everyone understands that safety is the primary issue of this concern. The next thing we have to understand is know that some kids will understand how to put a mask on and leave it there while others will not. We are less capable of making the elementary school kid, especially second grade down, to leave that mask on his or her face and not remove it. Well, that's one of the big concerns that we have right now. So in addition to that, then we have, of course, making sure that everyone has access. And because there was a paucity of machines that individuals could use to actually gain access to online learning, there was somewhat of a halt in actually making sure that all students were operating at grade level. But I have to say, a lot of it depends on the teacher and how the teacher is perceived by the student. Some of the issues you can skirt and you can get beyond those issues if the teacher has set up the appropriate relationship with the parent and the student.
Okay, we're going to move on to Christina. Christina Molina, do you remember the question or would you like it repeated?
Yes, I do, Mr. Smith. I remember the question.
Oh, can I ask you, can you see, we have a timekeeper that's trying to assist you? Can you see it? Can you see? Can you see the numbers that he's presenting?
I mean, yes.
You can? Okay, no problem. Please, let's have your answer. Thank you so much.
So, okay, Christina Molina, pronoun she/her, hers, a. Thank you, Action 2020, for inviting me today. You know, I am a mother of four Oakland Unified School District students. I have a fourth grader, third grader, first grader, and someone is going to start TK on the fall. Two of them are special learners, and I cannot tell you as a mother how difficult it has been to do distance learning. It's really an impossibility because I'm a working mom, so having to work forty hours from home and then supplement six hours of lecture for all of our children, you know, it's very difficult. It's almost an impossibility and it's asking way too much, you know, from parents, working parents in District Seven, and it's also asking way too much from teachers. You know, if I have to work and it's, I have to, you know, telework from home and I'm not able to assist my children in their education, I almost feel the same way as the teachers who have to telework from home and who is taking care of their children. So for me, starting school in the fall when the majority of the children in District Seven don't have a computer and we cannot ensure that, it's an injustice that is being done. Why are we starting when you cannot guarantee, you know, that everybody has the tools necessary to conduct distance learning? The only thing that's going to happen is going to stretch out the inequality even further. And honestly, I don't see myself as a mother of two special ed succeeding because my son, who's hyperactive, impulsive, can only stay for five minutes, you know, connected to the computer. That means that I physically have to be there, so what's going to happen with my job? And I'm, you know, we're working families in East Oakland. That means I live patient to patient. This formula is not working and it's continued to be, you know, an unjust system. The one-half fits all is not going to work for us anymore. And we have to stop making it believe that it does because it won't and it's only going to further the divide between the children from the hills and the children from the flatlands.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, we'd like to proceed to Victor. Are you ready? Do you want the questions to be reread to you or you good?
I'm good. I can go for it.
Proceed.
Thank you. First of all, thanks. I understand the situation, what is going on right now. Technically, right now, I'm considering a central worker, working in San Francisco for the Transportation Agency. Yeah, I completely understand the need of a comprehensive action plan and a contingency plan for those who are working outside currently, right now, on the front lines dealing with COVID-19 and the exposure of it. And it goes without saying, then, we need to prioritize, first and foremost, the health and the safety of our students, staff, and parents who are attending, who have been attending their students, who have been attending the school sites, who are actually coming up with a plan and how to teach online. And the first action plan, we actually would have, I think, would have been done, gone better for most students and parents, would have been we building up the infrastructure for online learning. That should have been a priority since day one because we know for a fact from history in the past that diseases and viruses tend to fluctuate. And even though having this set up in the first place, it would have prepared us for a setback as the one we're seeing today. We know we lack distribution and leadership from the top to the bottom, considering the lack of federal help from the president downward. So right now, we do realize that we got to be helping ourselves and hold each other as a community to help each other, how to make this work, considering that we're not having services or the support from the federal level. So ultimately, what I would have done differently, what I actually planned to do differently would be, A, first of all, build up the infrastructure for online learning, providing the workshop, providing the student support currently as it is and improving upon it. Secondly, we'll be actually utilizing, the school says that we currently have to provide onsite where we're able to open the smaller teacher to student ratio and provide the social distancing needed so students can go on campus in case they can get online service at home or if they're lacking a computer.
Okay, thank you very much, Victor. We're going to go on now to our second question. Kitty, do you have any follow-up?
I don't have a follow-up on this question. Thank you.
Okay. All right, this time, we're going to start with Brother Clifford Thompson. Racial justice for African-Americans is gaining significant attention and support throughout California for most demographics. How would you make our schools racially just?
Thank you for that question. That's a very important question, especially in this day and time. As a teacher, a classroom teacher, I have always started with something that I call an affirmation with my students every day. This affirmation is actually something that's pulled from every racial group. Well, most racial groups, I should put it that way. And my students actually learn that affirmation and they actually recite it, like I said, each morning. As a result of doing that, they understand that every racial group has provided something that's substantive to our existence as a people. So there is an automatic understanding that everyone is an equal contributor to the success of humankind. After that, I also decide not to just wait until there's a celebration of a certain ethnicity during a certain month. We do it throughout the entire school year where we celebrate the successes of everyone. I try to weave that into my curriculum when I teach so that students will see various individuals actually participating and contributing to the whole of society. That way, I break down any kind of barrier or preconceived notion that a student might have about a certain group only providing something that's beneficial to the whole, but they look at everyone providing something to make the whole viable for every single ethnic group.
Wow. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Christina, it is your turn. You ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Smith.
Do you want the question read again?
No, I'm okay. Thank you. So, you know, recently, we had, you know, the death of Congressman Lewis and it was painful, you know. We must not forget what happened in Selma. We must not forget the struggles that they did, Dr. King and Congressman Lewis. You know, blood was shed, lives were spent. And, you know, when we think about what is the justice that we want to bring today, let's begin to carry the legacy. Let's continue the dream where it stopped and continued into the present. And that means the desegregation of our Oakland Unified School District is highly segregated. I mean, in my district, you have two schools side by side, split in half. One half is majority African-American, the other half is majority Latinos. How can that exist? How can we have such a segregated system in the most diverse country, I mean, city in the nation? It's unbelievable the racism that still exists and we cannot deny it. That is not racism. We cannot deny it. It continues to exist today and we're not doing anything about it. So, yes, I do, I'm one of those candidates that believe that we need to begin to desegregate Oakland Unified School District. We need to begin to bus children from the hills to the flatlands and from the flatlands to the hill in order to have this full integration that needs to exist in the most diversity in our country. Thank you.
Victor, excuse me, I'm taking this in while I'm trying to do this work. Brother Victor, do you need the question reread to you?
No, not at all.
All right, have at it, brother.
Thank you. Let's just recognize that Oakland has a long history of the social struggles it has been for civil rights and this is a great desegregation of communities. I mean, let's just face the District Seven is heavily Brown, Black, and Brown brothers who actually live in their communities. We've always worked alongside as a working class. And yet, we still live in, as Christina and Clifford had mentioned, we live in a very desegregated society, segregated society in which we're seeing a lack of resources directed at our classrooms in our school sites. So the first actually we got to do is actually act on it rather than talk about it. We need to start sending and investing at our school sites, more support and close down the gap of inequity that exists today. As mentioned, not to, which you just mentioned about the computers, we just mentioned about online services. Who has access for online learning? We know that a good twenty percent of the students do not have access. Let's start there. Let's build up the most at-risk neighborhoods at their most adverse schools and build up their schools so they don't have to go to affluent schools outside of their communities or outside of their neighborhoods to attend and get a stellar education. That's where we start. We start by building up the backbone that is our city, which is the Oakland Unified School District. If our community is the embodiment of...
You give us that last sentence again because you kind of froze up on us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying that to build up our community, we need to start at home by building up and strengthening our community neighborhood schools by investing in it where students don't need to go to affluent communities for a stellar education. We need to build up our education starting here in the neighborhoods by investing in the neighborhoods and by building up and holding each other accountable for the kind of education we want and holding it to where we invest and we engage at home in our neighborhood schools.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, we're going to go to the third question now. Kitty, any follow-up?
I don't think Ben got to answer yet.
Oh.
And I don't have a follow-up, but I think he needs to answer.
Brothers, forgive me. I'm sorry, Ben. So do you have the question down or would you like me to read it again?
No, I've got the question.
All right, brother. Get it.
I cannot understand why in fifty-seven years since I've been in Oakland that we have not integrated our schools. When I started at McLeimans High School and looked at the curriculum and how it had deteriorated over the years, you would ask yourself, why would I put my child at McLeimans? We have private schools, we have charter schools, we have Catholic schools, and we have super, super public schools. The super, super schools are Oakland Tech and Oakland High and Skyline. The three schools that are left are Fremont, McLeimans, and Kalamazoo. Kalamazoo used to have an enrollment of eighteen hundred students. They're now down to eight hundred and nineteen. McLeimans used to be up at eight hundred and they're down to three hundred and sixty-five. You've got to look at the curriculum. And then you have games being played downtown by attendance people putting certain ethnicities in certain schools. They have been after McLeimans High School ever since I arrived in Oakland in sixty-three. They will tell parents in West Oakland, the school is full so that they can keep the enrollment down so that they can eventually close that school. We formed the new McLeimans Committee in 2011 to improve the curriculum. With twenty-nine students, why would anyone want to put their child over there? When you look at Oakland Tech and you look at Skyline and Oakland High with three times the number of courses in the curriculum. The fact that one person was deciding which ethnicity went to which school contributed to segregation and a lack of integration. We now have charter schools that set integration back fifty years. They basically were created, in my opinion, for white students not to go to school with black students. Yes, we have a Black Lives Matters movement now. I hope that carries over into November and that we can start to have parents in schools that they asked for. We had an Asian parent with a superintendent in the room at Prescott tell us that she tried to put her child over at Prescott in West Oakland and she was told that she should put her child in Lincoln. So these types of things have been going on for years. To have one person decide where a child goes based on their ethnicity is disgraceful.
That's right. Okay. Well, Kitty?
No follow-up on this.
All right, so we're going to move on then to the next, to the third question, folks. I'm going to read it carefully here and I apologize, Ben. That was my bad. Okay, this time, we're going to start with Christina. Here it comes. What will you do about the fact that the state continues to have veto power over district decisions through the power of FCMAT? F-C-M-A-T, which means the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team and the State Trustee. All right, did you, so I hope you got that question. They have veto power over our decisions. All of you going to answer this question?
Yeah, so we need to launch an investigation because under, you know, under this governance, you know, we have become more severely indebted. So for me, it's like, you're there because we are supposed to manage our funds because we weren't capable of managing our funds, but yet, under your jurisdiction, under your management and under your power, we have become more indebted. So for me, let's start with transparency and let's begin with an investigation and let's start to blow the whistle because there's no way that we should find ourselves worse than when we started under the ruling. And we also have to begin to advocate, you know, at the state level to make sure that the powers rest on the people of Oakland and that we have, you know, if the person that are elected, those are the ones that have the final veto on what is said in our community. I mean, I am, you know, a mother of four Oakland Unified School Districts that lives in the flatlands, that experienced all the trauma that happens in the flatlands, high unemployment, high violence, illegal dumping every single day, food insecurity, low employment, the hardest hit COVID-19, you know, city within Alameda County. And a state is going to tell me as a mother that they know better than what I, as a future director, my dictator is the best option for our children? It's unbelievable and we have to fight it. You know, right now, I'm circulating a petition. I don't know if I can share it in here. But my petition is really, you know, about COVID-19, creating sanctuaries, creating supplemental pay for our parents here in District Seven. And, you know, I'm taking action as I'm right here in COVID-19 and seeing all the atrocities that are happening to my community here in East Oakland. So for me, someone else telling what is best for my community, it's unthinkable and we're going to challenge it.
Okay, Victor, would you please answer the question? If, by the way, just for all of our panelists, if you ever need me to repeat the question, just say so. And otherwise, I won't keep asking if you need to, you know, to hear the question again. You all right, Victor, right?
Yes, I'm all right. Thank you. Well, it goes without saying, as I mentioned, following Christina, and I'm quite sure many of us who have witnessed, seen Oakland in its history, who have attended Oakland Unified School District schools. In the last twenty years, just alone, and I'm quite sure Mr. Tapscott could have a lot more history beyond that, knowing the history of the Oakland Unified School District, we have seen crisis and we've always seen problems physically in the school district in good and bad economic times. And so I definitely believe that we definitely got to reevaluate their presence and their purpose as, as an entity within oversight of our budget and fiscal policy. One thing for sure is that we've noticed that there hasn't been any improvement. And it goes without saying, we're still finding ourselves in a fiscal, considered fiscal insolvency and yet, it hasn't been addressed in the last twenty years. So I definitely would like to reevaluate their purpose. I believe in local authority. I believe that in our sovereignty. And I believe when we had our local leadership determining policy, we were in better shape than we are at now. So for one thing for sure would be to reevaluate their purpose and renegotiate their presence in which, and how we do our decision-making. One thing goes without saying is that one thing we definitely got to address alongside with that is our transparency and our responsiveness when it comes to fiscal policy and responsibility and accountability. That's something we definitely need improvement on and we definitely need to improve on how we communicate with the community and how we decide what's best for us. and how we decide what's best for our students. And we also gonna be engaging with parents, teachers and students and how we go forth from this point on as we're gonna be facing di- difficult and recession-like scenarios in the days to come. Thank you.
Right. Okay, Ben. Uh, we, we're coming right at you. Are you ready?
I stay ready.
All right, brother. Go ahead. Let's hear it.
My school board for the last eight years have been incompetent when it comes to finances. We know for a fact that there is a lot of contracts starting, and I couldn't figure it out, how do you start a contract in June and come back and ask for payment in August? The fact that we continue to get into financial trouble with the state and the fact that they can come in and take money and overspend in the three years they had the board. They overspent by fifty million dollars and we have to pay that bill. You look at Measure J, that money was supposed to go for facilities, four hundred and seventy million dollars. Go take a look at McClyman's High School's building that I brought to the superintendent's attention twenty-sixteen and led still exists in the water where the kids drink it. You look at our buildings, you look at the curriculum, they're spending five million dollars for one thousand Broadway. That is disgraceful when they waste that money. They were spending six point four million on the police department. So there's a lot of things that are being used uh, in illegally in my, my position. You look at the grand jury report, it talked about the mismanagement of the school board. And I think we have an opportunity to clean up a whole lot of misuse of money. The fact that they're not putting it where it should be uh, needs to be addressed. I think if we get control of our budget and don't overspend money that we don't have and start to give teachers raises and some of the people that are support services, the people that do the work should be getting paid. The district office could be located in one of our sites. I'm so glad that Bob got the police out. We did not have police when I started in sixty-three. We had what we called yard supervisors. So now that the police department is out of coal, maybe they could relocate and spend that five million dollars someplace else.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Uh, to all our panelists, try to keep one eye on Don because we don't wanna interrupt anybody. So he's gonna give you a thirty-second, oh shit. He's gonna give you a thirty-second warning and a stop, okay?
Gerald, I'm not seeing the time.
If you look at, look at, look at, tap, look at, look at Don. Can you see Don?
No.
Okay, well, um.
What I'll do, when, when I see, when I see the time, I'll just alert the coach or whomever. The, uh, the time, I'll alert the coach in instance, so when we get to about ten seconds, I'll let you know that you have about ten seconds left.
Okay, cool. All right. Can, um, can we move on to Clifford? On this matter?
Yeah.
About FCMAT?
Okay, I certainly sell. Um, the first thing we have to understand is uh, from a policy perspective, FCMAT is always introduced to a school that is deficit in handling its financial concerns. Um, so we have to understand that it's gonna necessitate a change of laws in order for this to be enacted if we want to try to intercept what FCMAT does. But, but I would like to suggest three things that would help us so that we wouldn't have to worry about changing the law necessarily. We as an open school will always be solvent, no matter how you look at it. And so, but the first thing I must say is that, you know, we have to make some real tough decisions. We have to make several cutbacks and we have to tighten our belt when it comes to spending. So um, my mantra that I use is make the cut as far from the classroom as possible. Always make sure the classroom has enough to, to absolutely uh, remain afloat. So I would suggest looking at three things necessarily and this would avoid having FCMAT ever to have to come into our school district. Number one, we have to understand that when we approve outside contracts and there is no oversight on those outside contracts, you invite problems in turn of your bottom line. Number two, we have to watch how we look at how schools are operating. It's impossible, from a policy perspective, it's impossible for us to sustain operation of failing schools. And number three, and this will certainly keep uh, FCMAT away, is if we always remain or keep the mandated reserves that we're to have at every school. It would be our responsibility as a school board to develop policy to make sure the three percent is always there. If the three percent is there, that's one way of making sure FCMAT never comes in. Because that means we as the board, we're actually handling things correctly. We're looking at things correctly so that we don't fall below the three percent.
Um, Gerald, I do have a follow-up on this. Uh, Ben, I wanted to ask you, you, you mentioned a lot of uh, issues with the board itself. But the schools that have been closed, for example, were closed uh, be largely over the last few years because FCMAT demanded it and said the district would have to make these cuts and closures or they would be made for them. So I wondered if you could comment directly on uh, the role of FCMAT and what, and what you would have to say about that.
They've closed six schools in West Oakland below five eighty. They have opened seven charter schools. We don't have a middle school in West Oakland because three hundred kids every year have to travel outside of West Oakland because the district will not give them a full feeder school because they don't want McClyman's to grow. The fact that the budget is twenty million surplus, one week, two weeks later, it's thirty million deficit. They need to be held accountable. If you have, we went and, and spoke at the county school board and asked them, are you monitoring the money you're sitting into Oakland? Because the misuse of funds, even after they do the three percent reserve, they are not spinning, Measure J is not supposed to be for rent down at one thousand Broadway. There is five million right there. Six point four for a police department, that's over ten, eleven million dollars. The fact that Fitmax comes in and keeps looking at our accountability is disgraceful and we're the laughing stock of the area when you look at our school board. Contracts, how many of those jobs could be done by existing staff? So the fact that we're misusing money, we don't have a money problem. We have a management problem and the school board is responsible for that.
Um, Clifford, I wanted to follow up with you also. Um, so the uh, FCMAT is in Oakland. It's not, it's not that it gets called in. It's in Oakland. It's been in Oakland ever since the state took over. And the state took over with a hundred million dollar loan forced on the district, which the district didn't need. So given that, um, I just wonder, you, you were, you talked about ways to keep FCMAT out, but FCMAT's already in. So do you have any response to what to do about FCMAT already being in?
Well, um, we have, yes, I do. Actually, we have to show, we have to demonstrate that we are capable of actually running the district without their in uh, infusion. And so if we show that we're making wise decision from a board perspective in terms of using the property correctly, in terms of making sure that we allocate funds correctly, in terms of making sure that spending is really near the classroom as it should be, that's one way of getting FCMAT out of what's going on. At the same time, we're paying back anything that we owe the state for bailing us out.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, shall I proceed? Kitty, you all right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go to the fourth question. Oops, here we go. Okay, this time we're gonna start with Victor, okay? Oakland now has an enormous number of students in charter schools, approximately fourteen thousand. Okay? What effect does this have and what policies would you advocate in relation to this fact?
Thank you. I don't wanna perpetuate the us against them platform considering that we are now currently in the school district, let alone fifty-five thousand students in the school district, fourteen thousand in charter schools. We've gone through discussion, debates, how to go about it, and it comes down to this. We need to be transparent. We need to hold each other accountable and we need to make sure that charter schools are held accountable to provide the services for special needs students. Fair chance for people, for African-American, Latino students to attend. And making sure that they also meet the same criteria as a public school. I'm for holding off any further expansion or any further additional charter schools to be open in District Seven or anywhere in Oakland in particular, because I believe it's been detrimental when charter schools have been meant to help the public schools in our communities improve in ways and how we can improve relationship with our students in learning. It was never meant for them to substitute or become a replacement of our public schools as we see them today. We need to open up a discussion with the community where we'll hold each other accountable and how we've approached this situation. We definitely need to re-enroll, increase enrollment for our students back into the, into our community schools, their district run. But at the same time, we also wanna make sure that every student is provided the services and support that they need to succeed and complete their education from K to twelve at the same time. So I'm actually for a moratorium to discuss with charter schools. I'm for to make sure that they're meeting their requirements toward the students. And at the same time, I'm actually open to re-enroll some of the students back into the Oakland Unified School District and find financial stability in the process.
Ben? Let's hear it. If you, you remember the question, let's hear it.
Charter schools not only segregate and discriminate, they're primarily in black and brown neighborhoods. It is us versus them. The money follows the child. The fact that we owed fifty million in sixty-three when the state came in with Randy Ward and overspent in three years, a budget of fifty million dollars and left us with a hundred million dollar bill. When I first started attending board meetings and heard about that, we called Sandre Swanson and Willie Brown to go to Tolleson and asked him, would he take that fifty million that they generated off the backs of Oakland's budget? The answer we got was the boat, the loan had been transferred to Bank of America. And my response was, so what? You ran that bill up and you're asking us to pay it. Charter schools, Newsom came out with three important legislative pieces. First of all, in three years, they must have teaching credentials. The second thing is they cannot duplicate subjects that are being offered in other charter schools. The third thing he put in place is the fact that we have to, we cannot open any more charter schools, quote unquote, if the district is in financial trouble. So I'm hoping that with this black movement that we can start to look at charter schools. Academically, no one believes me when I tell them that our elementary public schools outperform elementary charter schools. In the top ten of the last test that was given, out of the top ten, there was only one charter school and they were ranked ninth. Out of the top thirty, there are only eleven charter schools ranked and most of the public schools are probably in the hills and they outperform charter schools. So the fact that they wanted to come up with a choice, they also came up with segregation.
Okay. We're gonna go now to Brother Clifford, same question. Uh, wait a minute, unmute yourself, brother.
Can you repeat that question for me, please?
I most certainly will. That question was Oakland now has, wait, 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 wait. Baby, whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. You got, oh shit.
For clarification, Gerald, you, you, you just took the uh, fourth question out of order. We can go back to that as the next question.
Right, I went to the fifth by accident.
Right, that's okay. We can, we can go back to make number five.
Mr. Smith, I sit in the chat, so I can read it from the chat, sir.
Okay.
Okay, um, so, so the first thing I wanna say is, I think many times what we do is we um, regress to an acrimonious debate about charter schools and traditional public schools. We have to understand that all schools have to provide a decent education for our kids. If you look at Assembly Bill fifteen oh five, it talks about charter reform. And that charter reform actually specifically looks at three, well, the three things that I pulled out of it. And that is crediting of teachers. Uh, the emphatic, or I believe emphatically that the academic program should be sound. And the third thing, no school should restrict any student from attending the school because of his or her special need. Now, all three of those, I think, are the platform from which we can develop policy. And I like what Oakland Unified has done because if you look at Board Policy six zero zero five and Board Policy six zero zero six, they both deal with quality school development. And if we are to um, develop quality schools, I would like to take it one step further and say that we have to develop community schools or neighborhood schools where quality exists. Now, that means that you have to make sure that your school has a full service component that's going to eliminate inequities and you're gonna have an excellent teacher every single day. And the, the, if you look at six zero six, you're gonna discuss fiduciary responsibilities. So the charter school and the traditional public school can coexist if ideas of excellence is shared between the charter school and the public school. As a policymaker, that's what I would advocate for.
Okay, thank you. Christina, do you recall the question or would you like me to repeat it?
Yeah, I recall the question. Thank you. So as you know, I'm a mother of two special ed children. Um, in the field of choice, uh, I don't have the choice to serve my children to a charter school. Uh, you let me know if there's a charter school that is willing uh, to take my son Ketza, who is diagnosed with ADHD, who has behavioral problems, who is impulsive. And uh, next year, he's gonna go, well, he was supposed to go to a school here in my district where there were gonna be four adults at the school, thirteen uh, students, um, providing the support that he need. And I don't think there's such a classroom in the charter school. So uh, we have a long way to go to even just level out the playing field between charters and public schools for there to be an open choice where parents can take their children if they chose to. Um, it irks me and it bothers me that someone is actually making a profit out of our children's education. If wealthy people wanna come to Oakland to help our children because they care for the children, then come and help, donate. But don't make a profit out of us. So um, for me, it's just, it's just too hard to comprehend that anybody's making a profit out of my hard-earned money. You know, out of my property taxes that I pay every year, which forty-two cents, by the way, go towards education in Alameda County. It bothers me. So um, I know that this is what we have now. This is what I have inherited. And um, and we have to just make sure that the parents in the charter schools, you know, have full control of the budget, that they're really aware of who's making who. And really to, to, to launch a supplemental, you know, an assessment of all the positions in the schools and how much a person should earn. Maybe a principal should earn, I don't know, a hundred twenty thousand, but why is the charter paying a principal four hundred thousand? You know, I want parents in charter schools to begin to question that because that's part of the nepotism and the cynicism that exists in the charter schools and also in the public schools. So we need to begin to talk about that full transparency. And also in the public schools, so we need to begin to talk about that full transparency. Thank you.
Okay, so um, Victor, I think it's your turn, sir.
I think I answered that question, didn't I? With charter school?
Did you? Oh.
You did.
Yeah, I beg your pardon. We're gonna move on to the, to the fifth question, and that is
Has Ben answered?
Yes, he's been, you dealt with the charter school. Yes, he did. He was the first one.
Then I do have I got more, but okay. I do have a follow-up though, uh, Gerald, if, if I could, I, I do want to ask a follow-up question.
Sure.
Um, and maybe if everybody could be real quick with this, because I would like to ask it to everyone. So we have had uh, recently in Oakland, a lot of corporate contributions to uh, to election campaigns. And uh, many of those have come from kind of the corporate end of the charter school. Uh, you know, apparatus. So the question is, would you take uh, funding from corporate, corporate or other um, or charter school um, funders? Uh, and that, it's kind of a yes or no question. I think that's about all you need to, to give. Thank you. Hope that's clear. Whoever wants to start, I'd like to hear from everybody.
Yeah, Ben?
Some of our board members have bought and paid for it now, and I will never accept any money from any corporation or millionaires or billionaires, and I will never give our schools away for forty years.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Brother Clifford.
Yeah, okay, I certainly shall. Um, I think that question is a very good question, but there's something that goes deeper than that. And that, and that is, and this is something that people don't want to deal with. Do you want to be manipulated by the ones that give you the money? My answer to that is, no, I refuse to be manipulated by anyone. Depend, uh, and it doesn't matter how much money that person gives. If the person gives money and it's predicated on manipulating you to go what, toward what they want, I say absolutely not.
So could, could I, could I follow up just to ask you, but would, would you, I mean, I understand what you said, but um, it, you know, it is a matter of public record where, where funds come from, so at some point, we'll be privy to the information, so I wonder if you could answer aside from the manipulation factor, would you take money from corporate funders?
Well, see, now, I think, I think X, okay, no, I would, I would not, number one. But I want to allow us to understand. We have to, as board members and policymakers, we're going to have to step out of the box. Just giving a one-word answer does not give enough insight into what's really going on. I think really a person has to look at the fact that receiving that money, many times people are manipulated by the individuals who give that money. And we have to watch out. We cannot be manipulated. And I really want to draw us back to the point where are we making certain that students and parents are coming out ahead? And many times, we don't.
Thank you, thank you. Christina?
My campaign is one hundred percent grassroots. As an activist for more than twenty years, it cannot be any different. Uh, no corporate money, no charter money. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor?
Um, like Christina, my campaign is basically funded from local friends, family, neighbors. It's a grassroots movement. So far, everything we raise has been for individuals living within the neighborhood. Um, if there is a I guess a millionaire or billionaire lives in District Seven, who lives in a neighborhood, by all means, if they believe in the mess, if they believe in the message to strengthen our neighborhood schools, provide uh, reducing inequities that exist in our schools, I'd be more than happy to accept it, but I'm not gonna take a a donation by, if they want to dictate or if they want to proliferate the amount of charter schools that already exist. I'm for making things work. I'm for collaborating, allocating resources to students. Yeah, I'm for working with everybody as long, if it strengthens and performs and it provides stellar education to our public, to our public schools, and importantly to our students, especially those who are more at risk. Thank you.
So I, and if I understand correctly, you wouldn't exclude the possibility of taking corporate or charter corporate.
The question set up is two different questions, charter schools or corporate. I'm open to corporate, but if the purpose of charter schools is to proliferate, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That got me thinking over here. Okay, something's burning. I'm going to start this time with Ben. And this here it comes, all right? State requirements for schools rarely mention making students happy and comfortable. As a board member, how would you work to make Oakland Unified School District uh, Schools, yes, right, happy and caring places for students and parents? We serious about this.
Well, I have to say, I wish some of the candidates would ask, answer the questions, but anyway, we have to treat all of our children the same. The fact that some schools have some things and the other schools don't have some things, uh, the equity issue. If we really want to make them happy, we need to teach them how to read. If you put your child in a school for twelve years and at the end of those twelve years, he can't read, how successful will he be later on? If we don't take care of our children on the front end, we're gonna have to take care of them on the back end. We've got seven thousand adult prisons. Forty percent of those inmates are African-Americans. The fact that I was on juvenile justice commission for thirty years and watched the discrimination with police and the fact that they would stop me simply for driving down while being black. We have to have equity and justice in our schools if we want to make them happy.
Okay. Uh, Brother Clifford Thompson saying to you.
Yes, um, I really believe that making students happy is predicated on a teacher who has done five things that I feel. Number one, that teacher has developed a relationship. There is appropriate communication. You've understood the culture of your classroom. You have great structure and there is exemplary consistency. So as a policymaker, what I would do is work with the superintendent to make sure that we have the appropriate teaching staff in order to meet our children where they are. I feel that we have, and this is coming from a teacher, as a teacher who is going to be a policymaker. And that is, we have too many teachers who are not taking the time to establish the appropriate relationship with students in order to make the student happy in class. That same person I mentioned earlier, who talked when I was out walking, getting signatures, who said, in my community, who said that safety is important, that same person also insinuated that what we have to do is make sure that teacher established a complete control of the classroom. So, to sum this whole question up, I, as a policymaker, would work with the superintendent to make sure that we're receiving quality teachers in every classroom. That's why I alluded to Board Policy six zero zero five and also Board Policy six zero zero six. Because when you get those equitable classrooms that provide safety for the students, learning will take place, every student will be happy and feel comfortable. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Brother Thompson. Now Christina? Please share your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So, you know, as you know, in activist, you know, I worked for almost a decade in the anti-racism movement and anti sexual exploitation of our children here in Oakland. In case you don't know, Oakland is a top three cities in the nation uh, where any man can come and purchase a child, the majority being young African-American little girls, as young as eleven years old. So when I think about the happiness of our childrens in District Seven, uh, let's talk about the issues that they're facing, right? So uh, many of them have parents with substance abuse disorders, uh, poverty, uh, food insecurity. So let's begin with the basics before we even talk about making the child happy. Let's make sure that he has the basics to survive. Uh, for me, you know, my plan on enriching the happiness of children uh, is ready to create the first responders in the Oakland Unified School, um, uh, Oakland Unified School uh, District. The first responders team will be a team that will go to the child, you know, when the child is getting an F or a D and uh, on an exam or a quiz. When a child is being disruptive, when a child is violating another child, we send that team to find out what is hindering the success of that child. I don't think we should longer wait several months to give an F or a D on a child's report card. Because it's like, what happened before? Where was the intervention? Did you just honestly believe that our children are not capable of learning? I don't. I believe that black and brown children in my district are capable learners. But if they're not getting those A's and B's on those quizzes, it's because something is hindering their success, something is hindering their happiness. And we need to get to the bottom of it, so I'm against removing the, obviously, the Oakland Police Department from the schools, and we need to put more resource in this uh, first responders team. So we need to really provide a nature and environment for our children to thrive. We need to move from equality into equity and make sure that our children from District Seven in the flatlands are going out with much more disadvantage and a lot more trauma.
And Victor, please share your thoughts with us on this matter.
Yeah, um, we've, we've always heard this African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child. And that's the truth. For us, there are different factors that impact the life of a student. What happens inside the classroom, what happens inside the campus, and what happens outside the campus. All of these are impacts that hit, they hit the student's life, one way or the other, for, for positive or for negative. For them to be happy, we need to listen where they're coming from and where they're at. And what we can do to help them out succeed. Making sure that they're surviving, thriving outside the campus for us to be able to help them to thrive and survive in the campus. I think it comes down to listening to them. Not lecture them what they're doing wrong. We all, we know the obstacles that may be facing, or maybe we don't, but we won't know unless we listen to them. And we engage with them and understand them as adults. And listen, not tell them, but listen. And from that engagement, from that discussion, we can find the solutions to mitigate and address those issues that they face on a daily basis. We need to make the campus inviting, positive. And for that to happen, we need to start reinventing the campus. Make it look, make them, making them less prison-like and more community-like. And by doing that, we're providing them with better classrooms. A supportive system for them to succeed as tutoring, com, learning centers or computers, so they can come in and do their homework, even if they can't do it at home. You know, providing them with mental and safety and health counselors to talk to them, help them find, navigate to survive in the school as well as outside the school.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you. Now how are we with our time, gentlemen?
Well, we're currently at um, three oh four. So we, we're gonna start uh, audience questions in one minute, so we do not have time right now for the sixth question, depending on how many audience questions we have. So depending on how many audience questions we have, uh, if we don't have that many, then we can go back. Um, depending on, on the time allotment, back to that final sixth question, but I think it's time to uh, for Hillary to chime in for audience questions.
Um, okay, so we do have uh, the beginnings of some audience questions, so um, I'll start, I'll start with the first one. Uh, which is, what is your relationship to go public schools and how do you see their impact on Oakland Public Schools?
Oh, okay, so don't all just answer it once. Why don't we just start off with Ben Tapscott there? And just work our way around Ben Tapscott followed by Clifford. Let's go.
You either want discrimination or integration. Charter schools put low academic students out and they end up in public schools. They do not accept special ed students. Public schools accept all students. And the fact that I'm hearing people talk about our teachers. We've got some of the best teachers probably in the state of California. The problem is not the teachers, the problem is administration and the district office and the fact that we have to continue to coexist with charter schools. Why do they only coexist with public schools and don't coexist with other charter schools? We have no feeder schools in West Oakland. The fact that some of these kids have to travel great distances outside of West Oakland, I'm talking sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So it's difficult to talk about integration and all the other window dressing that charter school advocates purport. It does not help integration. It does not help the academics. It does not help the budget. I do not have a relationship with Go.
Okay. Your, your time is up, Brother Ben.
Thank you.
He, I heard he does not have a relationship with Go. Uh, Clifford Thompson, let's hear from you, sir.
Okay, certainly. Yes, I have to be very honest and transparent. I have a relationship with Go because what I do is, I want to get data to see what our schools are doing. Um, so when I get the data, I'm able to look at what is going on and what's happening. For example, I have the same relationship with the NAACP. And what we're doing is, we're looked, well, what they're doing is, they're looking at the reading of kids in Oakland. In both situations, I'm able to get data and then I, as a policymaker, I'm able to see exactly what we are doing to help black and brown kids with their reading. But what I can say, when I look at the data and it's deplorable, I can say, I, as a practitioner in the classroom, have moved my kids eighty percent to either meeting their target or exceeding their target in reading at the fifth grade level.
Thank you. Okay, Christina? Please answer that question.
Yeah, I haven't, I have no relation with Go public schools. I feel that uh, they're deceiving. I know that they try to pose themselves as a pro-parent, public schools and charter schools, but when you look at their history and at their donors, the majority are uh, private donors, right? We're talking about Bloomberg. Uh, not even from this state, but from, from New York. And, and we're also talking about that they scrutinize Oakland Unified School District budget, but they never scrutinize the charter's budget. So again, if they're gonna try to convince us that there are for both sides, then try. Try to be for both sides and try to, try to educate both parents on both sides of the aisle, the discrepancies on both sides.
Okay, Victor?
Yes.
Let's hear, let's hear you.
All right, thank you. I too don't have much of a relationship with Go public schools. I've been invited to one of the forums, which, to be quite honest, I do plan to attend just to hear them out. But going with a policy maker, something, oh, it's a policy maker. I do want to say that I have the question, the data they provide. Um, I believe that the last couple of studies they made, I reviewed them myself. It only encompasses the last fifteen and ten years, but it doesn't really study the overall fifty or forty or sixty years, which is where we tend to have fluctuating student enrollment. And because of the short sightedness of their studies, I got a question where not the, the recommendations they give is truly practical or feasible, especially where we're at now. If people, if those issues have been made recently, have been based in our studies, they've been pretty much misguided. But I'm open to discussion, I'm open to actually question their data, question their statistics. And I don't mind working around what they're providing, but at the same time, I do question what they are providing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have another audience question, which is, as a school board trustee, you are a policymaker, not the superintendent. What policy goals do you hope to accomplish within your first year? What policy goals do you hope to accomplish within your first year? What policy goals do you hope to accomplish within your first year?
Let's, let's go ahead and start with with Ben again. Let's, let's just stay, stay in the order. First year, Ben.
Equity. Justice. Integration. Academic performance. Teaching kids how to read. Breaking the pipeline to prisons. Understanding that a zip code. Did not determine the quality of education that a child receives. The fact that black and brown students make up almost seventy percent of Oakland Public Schools. They're underserved. I fought for Fremont for five years to get a football field. The fact that Oakland High got one but not Fremont. I marched with Caesar Chavez when I was in the eighth grade, because in the fields, I was getting thirty cents for a basket. And the back in the students were getting twenty. I fought for those kids and marched with Caesar Chavez. We have to work on integrating our schools. If Berkeley can do it, Oakland can do it.
Thank you, Ben. Clifford, once again, your first year.
Thank you very much. My first year as a board member, um and I do understand um. That we are policymakers. I would really look at, again, Board Policy six zero zero six. And I would look at that board policy because it talked, it talks about community schools. I would move forward to making certain that every school in each community has the correct offering. So that no one has to leave their community and be bused to another school. So I, I know it's, it's, it's hard work, it's gonna be challenging, you're gonna for, you're gonna face people. Who are against what you wanna do, but I think as a black parent, as a black single parent. Who raised a son in Oakland, who graduated from an Oakland school. That I think as a policymaker, what I would wanna do is work with the schools in the community. Build those schools up so that every child can have what they used to have. And I, I don't wanna go racially on anybody here, but the black folks know that. One thing for sure, in your community, if you had a school and a church, you were happy. Because they were doing what they were supposed to do to make sure that you would be uh advanced.
Okay. Thank you so much, Clifford. Christina, your first year.
Yes, in my first year, it's gonna be about transparency, accountability, and restoration. So transparency is about really giving the tools to parents uh to keep a vigilant eye on their school, on the respective school budget. So that means providing them the training to see the red flags and then provide them a safe space where they can blow the whistle. So that has to be as the directors. The second one is accountability. You have to hold people accountable. I mean, if we're gonna pass some serious policy. At the district, uh you know, at the, at the board, then we have to make sure that there's follow-up. You know, that those laws are being implemented, followed through. And the last one is restoration. We have to provide justice. We have to move from e- equality to equity. And we have to begin to provide the sanctuaries for our children to learn and thrive and be happy and create change.
Okay, and now Victor, your first year, sir.
Thank you. Uh first and foremost, health and safety for everybody involved in the community, school community. You're gonna make sure that if we're gonna have our students and teachers going to the classroom or outside the classroom, we're gonna make sure that they gain safety. Having a comprehensive plan in place to make sure they are protected on both ends, both faculty, students, and parents. Secondly, will be transparency, accountability, and responsiveness. We gotta be accountable, we gotta be responsible for, and we're gonna be dutiful. To the decisions we make fiscally as well as policy. And making sure we're diligent in what kind of policy we're enacting by making sure we have the right data and questioning the data, whether it makes sense. And thirdly, is optimizing our real estate as part of schools, which we can actually improve and implement smaller teacher to student ratio. And implementing the social distancing when needed at these school sites. We need to make sure that we're utilizing every resource, every resource, every resource available to us. And more importantly, is that we have to hold each other accountable and have a collective accountability and how we pursue this by engaging with parents, teachers, students. Listen, plan with them, collaborate, and allocate correct, uh excuse me, allocate what the needed resources at the camp, at the school sites and campuses.
Thank you. Uh I think Gerald's gone for a minute, so I'm gonna raise the next question. Do you support abandoning the OUSD blueprint for quality schools? Uh I guess Gerald was doing it in the same order, so let's do that again. Ben?
Blueprint process was a fraud. A waste of district money, taxpayers' money. The outcome was predetermined. When they spoke at McLehman's High School in their report. And said that McLehman's High School had seven feeder schools, I knew we were being hoodwinked. That report was about. Giving the results uh to the public that they had been told to give to the public.
Thank you. Gerald, I just took over for a second and asked the next question, which Ben has answered.
Okay, so we're gonna go to Clifford with the same question, which was, I'm sorry.
Do you support abandoning the OUSD blueprint for quality schools?
Oh, that's a question right there. Yeah, let's go, Clip.
You know, uh no, I do not support abandoning it. I, I support actually expanding it. And what I mean by that is, the blueprint for quality schools actually speaks to. Um and I've mentioned this board policy several times, Board Policy six zero zero five. It actually speaks to actually establishing what is necessary in each community. For a child to have a wholesome educational experience. So I, I um, I believe that we should expand the blueprint to include. Uh the community meetings of influen- influential individuals in that community. Persons who are considered organic leaders in that community to get other people involved. And actually establishing those community schools. Not only that, I think what we should do is have a transparent um representation. So that it's given in a community forum, it's spoken to in a community forum. So that everybody in the community hears the exact same message, because it will eventually end up in a neighborhood school.
Okay, Christina, and I, do you know, you know what we're talking about? We're talking about the blueprint. So what is your opinion on the blueprint?
You're on mute.
You're on mute right now, Christina. You have to unmute yourself. There you go. There you go.
I mean, well, the blueprint, you know, was supposed to um provide more culturally rever- relevant curriculum. Um that showcases the incredible historical resilience and strength in the people of color. Um but we haven't seen that. At the end, it translated to the closures of schools. So for me, um, we need a model that stops closing the schools. I'm against any of, uh any schools closing at this moment. Because the schools are, you know, the teachers are not failing the schools. It is a lack of resources and the lack of of just realizing that children from the Flatlands. Need more resources because they're starting with less resources. You know, when they come to school, you cannot expect a child from the Flatlands and a child from the hills. To succeed at the same rate with the same equal amount of of uh of resources. One will need eventually more. You can't expect them to compete in that way. It was, it's, it's, it's a recipe for destruction and failure, as we have seen. But it's not that the teachers are failing, it's really that the administration is failing by not providing more resources to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christina. Victor?
Yes.
The blueprint.
Blueprint. Facing COVID nineteen, in acid, in the blueprint as it stands, I feel is just a. A runaway justification for school closure as it stands, which I'm against. I think we should try to avoid school closure to every means possible. I believe that right now, we need to upgrade this blueprint. Re- restructure it and reevaluate where our goals are now, considering that the inequities that have been exposed because of COVID nineteen. We need to focus on how we can utilize and optimize our school sites, how we can engage the community for better discussions. And not rush to decisions. And it seems what the, what the current leadership has done, it's been trying to meet the quality, the cohorts of this blueprint. Being rushed without really thinking through or being diligent of where the impacts will be down the line. So I will be for reevaluating it and restructuring it and reinventing it if necessary.
Gerald, if you don't mind, um I'd like to do a follow-up on this question too. A couple of people answered uh the, and everybody answered about the blueprint and a couple of people said whether they would or would not support school closing. So I just wondered if I could ask Ben and Clifford also whether you support school closings.
I think the entire district needs to be realigned. I'm looking at District Seven, twenty-two schools. One and a half middle school. I'm looking at West Oakland. They used to have two feeder schools, enrollment was around eight thousand. They now have half a middle school, which means sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Must travel outside West Oakland. These are young kids to schools outside their neighborhood. When I look at curriculum at the high schools, the fact that Oakland High has a hundred and five. Skyline has a hundred and ten, Oakland Tech has a hundred and nineteen, Casamot is down to ninety. Fremont is fifty-six, and McLehman's only has fifty. Where, where is the equity in curriculum in our high schools? And how are parents in East Oakland, District Seven? Getting to one middle school. There is also a half a middle school on our campus. And I don't understand six to eight. And the realignment and making patterns that make sense to parents and communities needs to be addressed. My colleague keeps talking about board policy. They are directed by, I feel, outside influences. Maybe there are things on the book like Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, saying we should not segregate and discriminate. So we have to get equity and justice in our schools and have feeding patterns that make sense. We do not have seven feeder schools in West Oakland. And that's what was reported to the public. So we need to look at how our alignment, how our feeder patterns are established to make sense. And make sure that everybody has the things in their school, including their curriculum.
Okay.
Cliff- Clifford, could you uh respond to, do you or do you not support school closures?
Um, both. I support school closures and I don't support school closures. But it's all predicated on a simple fact. If the school is not performing, something is wrong. We have to have the hard conversations and we have to look at two primary things, I think. Number one, as a policymaker, I would look at equity. Number two, I would look at academic prowess. Again, I'm going to mention something that's very, very geared to my heart. And that is the reading scores of African-American black boys at the third grade level. The construction of prisons is predicated on the reading scores of those kids. So are you telling me that what you would do is keep a school open if my black kids are not achieving? That also, believe it or not, it includes brown kids. It includes all kids of color. And so we have to make sure that the school is actually providing what it was meant to provide in order for it to stay afloat.
Um before we have another uh question from the audience, can I ask Clarence if we, how much time we have left?
Well, we're out of time, so we're at, we're at three twenty-five, so we're at the.
All right.
Our, end of our day practically, so you know, we're out, back to uh closing statements for candidate, from the candidates at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
You've heard this. Uh go ahead, Kitty, were you gonna say something?
No, no, I was just about to ask you to un- unmute.
Okay. Okay, guys, so what now, this is the crown, this is your closing statement. Okay, and we're gonna go right down the list as we have. So Ben, and how much time are the brothers and sisters gonna have for this close? One minute?
One minute, yes.
Okay, one minute. I'm sorry about that, folks.
And somebody's gonna remind, um because everybody can't see Don, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna say ten seconds, not to interrupt, very low, so listen for it, okay? Okay, Ben, please, let's have your, your closing statement.
We're at a pivotal point in America, not only with the Black Lives Movement. But our future are young people. I believe in three E's. One is education. Of the fact that we have to get our children educated and if they need additional resources, reading, uh home. Uh tutoring from people going to those schools of low performing. The other item after I talk about education is employment. We have to employ people so that they will not end up under freeways. Economic development, bring back the building trades. Every child doesn't have to go to college. A lot of them would have skills to pay some bills. And the fourth one is enforcement. The police are doing things out there that are illegal. Police captains are not firing them and. District attorneys are not prosecuting them and the.
Got ten seconds, brother.
They need to be put in jail and the courts are not being fair when it comes to black and brown and American Indian children.
Okay, so that's, that's Ben's final statement, Clifford.
Yes, um, yeah, quickly, being an educator who has been in education for forty years. As a classroom teacher, uh an administrator, a county coordinator, and also a college professor for sixteen years. I'm acutely aware of what's needed for kids to make a growth from the elementary level all the way through college. With that said, I think we should, as policymakers, concentrate on equity. And academic prowess for kids to actually make it through this system. With that, also, we can establish neighborhood schools where every school is providing the same. Uh curriculum so that every child comes out totally equipped to make it in this world. By either going to college or going to work. So as a policymaker, I would speak with the superintendent.
Ten seconds.
To make sure that we actually provide this for all of the students.
Thank you very much, brother. Okay, Christina. Let's hear you farewell.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh my name, as you know, Christina Molina, Chicana, cisgender pronoun, she/her. A proud mother of four beautiful boys in the Oakland Unified School District. I am also a product of our, our, of East Oakland and their education system. I attended Melrose Elementary Schools, Calvin Simmons Junior High, and John C Fremont. As you know, I am a mother of of two special learners and, and one thing that frightened me was that I saw the pipeline. From school to prison for one of my sons. And that's because kids are special and we're every day trying to mold him and pressure him to be something that he's not. We need to change this paradigm of one hat fits all. I think children are able to learn, but they're able to learn in very different ways. So I really invite the community to really learn how the Afro-Indigenous community, the Native community, you know, of the, of, of the state of Aloney. You know, we're actually teaching their children, because the way that we're doing it right now is not producing. An outcome positive for our community here in the Flatland. So uh like I said.
You got ten seconds.
And you know, I look forward. Come visit my uh webpage, it's votechristinamolina.com. You know I'm grassroots, so make your donations. Thank you.
Okay, all right, now we're gonna end it up with brother Victor Valaria.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um like Christina, I was, I'm a product of the Oakland Unified School District. I was a Chicano growing up in East Oakland. I understand what students face today. I've been in their shoes. And as a, and if elected as a school board director, I will work hard. I know these are difficult moments that we're facing and I will work hard and I will navigate through them with the community and listen to the community. I will work toward transparency, accountability, and responsiveness and avoid, and I will. And I avoid, and I will work hard to avoid school closures and optimize the school campuses to serve our students with stellar education and resources to make sure they succeed along the way. Um, one of the most important things I definitely will work on will be to make sure the students thrive and survive in the landscape that is today, the twenty-first century economic, economy that is the Bay Area. Why are we living in the most richest neighborhood, richest area in the world and yet we still finding inequities within our own backyard? And we gotta work hard to close that gap. And that is what I will propose as director and as a community member for, for East Oakland.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you so much, Victor.
Thank you.
And thank you all. I thank brother Ben Tapscott, Clifford Thompson, Christina Molina, and Victor Valario. Boy, very, very interesting forum. Very interesting. And we wanna thank you for attending. And I'm hoping that, uh, there will be more opportunities for our citizens to hear from you. Because this is nothing, nothing is more important than the education of our children. I wanna thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that, thank you, everyone. And that, that concludes this forum um, in our series of forums. In this election, Districts one, three, five, and seven will be electing new school board members. Action twenty twenty has held forums with candidates from each district. All of those forums are recorded and available online. Please visit actiontwentytwentyoakland.org for links to all our forums. And while you are there, you can learn more about us and sign up for our email list. In August, Action twenty twenty will be making our own endorsements in these four races. Thanks to our production team for setting up this forum. And a big thank you to all of our candidates today for your participation. And we thank you, our audience, for joining us and adding your questions. Have a wonderful day. Thank you very much.